Call this Altoona City Council meeting to order Monday, December 4th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. We will now have a moment of silent prayer. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Linda, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Beatty.
Here.
Councilman Butterball.
Here.
Councilman Cooper.
Here.
Councilman Ellis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ickes.
Here.
Councilman Kelly.
Here.
Mayor Pacifico.
Here.
Okay, we have a presentation on the agenda tonight. Here to give us an update on the comprehensive plan from CZB is Pete Lombardi and Matt Ingles.
Are you guys seeing this on your screens?
You are?
Okay. Okay, there it is, coming up. Okay, thanks for including us on your agenda this evening. And what we'll be doing is just a quick set of project updates to bring you up to speed on where we are with the comprehensive plan. Then what we'll talk about some, what we're calling December checkpoints that we have for this week with our steering committee and the general public that are kind of an important, rated important part of the planning process. And so there's some key directions to get input on this week from the public and others. And then we'll talk about the next steps coming up for this process. So first, some project updates. So this is a process that began in May of this year and will conclude roughly around April of next year when a final plan should be ready for the council to review. We're currently a little more than halfway through the process, right towards the end of the second phase, which has been mostly about engagement. It started with some open houses back in July. It included an online survey. It's concluding this month with some open houses. And this is also the month where we're really going to start drafting a plan, especially after we get input from stakeholders this week. The December open houses for our trip here this week included one earlier this afternoon at the Juniata Civic Association. And then there is one tomorrow at Trolley Works at 6:00, running to 7:30. The December checkpoints we're going to talk about tonight include a lot of information that has been compiled for the open houses and that we're also using in some other meetings that we're holding this week. And just as a reminder of who's been participating in this project so far, we had that online survey in July and August that had over 700 responses. We had about 125 participants so far in two rounds of small group conversations or kitchen table conversations that have been organized by our steering committee. And then the open houses we had in back in July had about 60 participants. Another 20 attended Juniata Civic Association tonight. And then there'll be more tomorrow at the Trolley Works. And then we also have a project steering committee that we've met with now four times. And as well as these regular updates we've been doing with this council and the Planning Commission.
Pete, I don't mean to interrupt. The 700 online surveys that were received, based on a city of Altoona's size, how would, how does that rank in terms of responses that you see in other similar sized cities when you do work?
I'd say that it's a very good response rate for a city of this size. We've had comprehensive plans in larger cities where maybe you can expect between 700 and 1,000 ideally. We've also had cases where you get maybe 200 or 300. So I think the staff and our steering committee did a really good job of sort of attracting attention to the survey and even did a lot of work going to different events to help people fill out physical versions of the online survey. So we were really impressed by the effort the city gave.
Thank you.
Yeah. The crux of the open house posters that the public will be seeing today and tomorrow and what we're presenting to the Planning Commission, to our steering committee, has kind of a preview of what we've been seeing in all of our data analysis, as well as what we've been hearing from the public. And one thing that has been interesting to us is that there's what we detect as divided opinion in the city as to whether Altoona seems to be declining, recovering, or Altoona seems basically stable. And what we sense by just looking at data that we've been collecting and analyzing is that the unsettled mood in the city about its direction is a really good reflection of the fact that your numbers, your demographics, your economics, when you look at conditions in neighborhoods on your major corridors, they send mixed signals. There are some numbers that look really good. You're competing for certain demographic groups in a way that you haven't before, young adults. You're actually doing pretty well within Blair County, young adults with bachelor's degrees or more, you're doing pretty well. At the same time, the population has continued to fall, the number of jobs has continued to fall. But your poverty rate has been basically stable, incomes have been keeping pace with inflation. So it's kind of this mixed grab bag of these things look good, these things don't look good, which is a challenge to make sense of. And we sense that a lot of residents in Altoona also kind of see mixed signals. They see things that they should be encouraged about, feel confident about. They see other things that are problems that have been around for a long time, and they don't see them getting better. So I think it's that interesting mixture of attitudes that we've been gleaning from the public so far. And you'll see at the open houses and in a document we'll have on our website, on the project website, altogetheraltoona.org on Wednesday, a plan preview document that compiles many of those storylines from our analysis so far. So that'll be on Wednesday, that that document is up and available for review. What we're also including in our open houses today and tomorrow is, and in this plan preview document that'll be on the website, is a sense of what Altoonans have been telling us about what the city's path forward should be. And this has a couple of different components to it that you'll see on this slide here. One is a compilation of what the city's core values are that should be part of a decision-making framework. So we heard back from the public in July and August about being resourceful, self-reliant, and gritty. Those were words that people readily selected when asked to identify what are some habits or attitudes or behaviors that have been part of Altoona for a long time, that you want to see continue, be part of the Altoona DNA going forward. And there were also some aspirational values that have some roots in Altoona in the past that people want to see accentuated more going forward. Its entrepreneurial spirit, its inclusivity, its willingness to be bold when called for. And what we've done is taken those values and translated them into what you see on the right-hand side of this slide, which are some draft planning principles. Having skin in the game, demanding and maintaining higher standards, embracing risk-taking and new approaches to doing things in the city, and protecting and strengthening Altoona's inherent assets. So one thing that we're testing as part of the open houses and our different meetings is to see if these are the values we've been told by Altoonans resonate with them. Do these planning principles, are these a good translation of those values? So that's one thing. The other part of the path forward that we're testing is this set of priorities. And this is a little bit complex. There isn't just like one or two or three priorities. What we've identified is actually two categories of priorities. Better public spaces designed with people in mind, and then neighborhoods with pride and opportunity. And both of those categories have a couple of different layers to them. So public spaces is about a stronger, more vibrant downtown, safer, more beautiful streets, and then having better, well-connected parks. And the neighborhoods piece is about making sure your stable neighborhoods become even healthier, diminishing levels of blight within the neighborhoods, and then expanding your inventory of appealing and affordable housing opportunities. So this is all from the responses we got from the public in terms of key issues that were important to them. This is our effort to kind of synthesize those responses into something that feels coherent and something that you can base a plan on. And an important part of this, you'll see at the bottom of this slide, was one of the major responses we got in terms of priority issues is retaining and attracting younger households, talented workforce. And what we see so far is that the items you see under better public spaces and neighborhoods with pride, that getting those things right, getting those basics right, will be critical to making sure that the city can compete for young households, can compete for workers who can live anywhere, giving them a very good reason to choose Altoona, not just Blair County, but choose Altoona specifically. So getting some feedback this week on whether this set of priorities and the way they're presented resonates, whether this seems like a good way to ground the plan as we begin drafting it. The last piece that we're including in our discussions this week and at the open houses is beginning to talk about what a plan for action might look like as part of, as kind of the final chapter of the comprehensive plan. What is the implementation game plan? What do you do? When do you do it? Who does it? What does it cost? And one of the things that we're talking about this week is the need, in many respects, for Altoona to be doing some things differently if it wants to achieve different results, whether that's with neighborhood conditions, whether that's downtown, whether that's how streets are maintained, how new streets are built, how parks are maintained. There are a number of things that the city could be doing differently if it wants to achieve better results. And one of the challenges when it comes to a plan of any kind that is calling for doing things differently is that usually you're doing what you're doing because that's sort of its habit. It might be decades, decades worth of habits that are kind of ingrained. And this is where we think that the planning principles that were on that previous slide will be really helpful. As you're making decisions that come before this body or other bodies, you know, thinking about those principles. If this is important to us, do we have skin in the game? Are we showing that we're willing to invest in this? Are we raising our standards with this project or this program? Are we embracing risk by doing this, or are we shying away from risk? Are we investing in the protection of assets as we think we should? So that's one way that those planning principles become useful for day-to-day decision-making. And we also think that it'll be useful as we work on a draft and work with stakeholders over the next few months on reviewing and vetting a draft is the idea of translating having real skin in the game to thinking about how the city can and its partners can have a fund going forward that is comprised mostly of local resources that can be a key source of getting new and different approaches off the ground without having to wait for Harrisburg, wait for Washington, maybe wait for money that never comes from other sources, but actually having a fund of local revenues that can really help to accelerate important work on the city's priorities. So one of the things we're talking about this week is this idea of potentially an altogether Altoona fund that would be a major way of getting the city and its partners organized around paying for new things, different things that will have an impact on priorities. A few of the things that we're showing to our different stakeholder groups this week relate to the property taxes in Altoona. We've been looking at different revenue sources that could be part of upping the ante when it comes to having more resources to do more things in Altoona. And the property tax is the most obvious first thing to look at because it's already the city's largest source of revenue. And one thing that we found, looking at Altoona compared to the average for Pennsylvania's 15 largest cities, and I know this is a little bit difficult to read, it's a snapshot from one of our posters, is that Altoona, in its 2023 budget, had a per capita property tax levy of $216 based on that 5.129 current mill rate. For Pennsylvania's 15 largest cities, the average property tax levy per capita was $364. So Altoona's current per capita property tax levy is quite a ways below that average for the 15 largest cities in Pennsylvania. And even if you remove Philadelphia and Pittsburgh, that 364 figure comes down to $343. So there's still quite a ways between where Altoona is now and where that average for Pennsylvania's 15 largest cities is. The other thing that we'll show as we kind of close up our presentation is kind of a step that is part of the open houses today and tomorrow, where we're presenting this information to the public and asking them, what might you be willing to see Altoona invest in things that are important to you that could be part of the altogether Altoona plan? And specifically, what sort of a millage rate increase might you be willing to support if it meant having additional revenues to contribute to priority issues? And so what this table shows in that light pink column is kind of incremental millage rate increases over the 2023 rate. In the next column, how that translates into approximate revenue generated per year. And then in that last column, how that translates to additional taxes on a house assessed for $100,000. So that 1.0 millage rate increase translates to 1.9 million or $100 in additional taxes on that house assessed at 100,000. And what we think is interesting about this chart here is that that 3.5 increase is the level of increase that would be needed for Altoona to reach that 364 average level. So there's a lot of space between where Altoona is now and what would put it at average for the 15 largest cities in Pennsylvania. And we provide this as context for just getting our heads around, and the community's heads around, different revenue sources, different ways of thinking about local resources that could be generated and put towards issues that are important and that come out of this planning process. So our next steps, as we compile feedback and thoughts from our meetings this week, is to begin work by the end of this month on drafting a full comprehensive plan to review and to present to this body and to others for review and discussion by the end of February. And we'll be having additional meetings here in Altoona on February 26th. So that's kind of the quick overview of where we are. Happy to take any questions before we conclude. Yep.
When you talked about, there's pretty much a division between declining, improving, and staying stable.
Yeah.
Have you been able to identify if, what groups are identifying in that manner? Is there any specific?
So that's a good question, and kind of the differences between people seeing Altoona on the rise versus Altoona declining. One of the things we were able to detect was that our steering committee, for example, and people who came to the open houses in July tended to be more optimistic. And what we kind of inferred from that was that those are folks who are more plugged in to kind of what's going on, what's been happening, what's coming up in terms of projects and developments. And it was online survey takers who were a little more pessimistic. They were actually kind of split between, I think it was like 38% of them saw Altoona declining, 36% thought it was on the rebound, and some other percentage thought that it was kind of stuck in a stability. So it seemed like folks who are a little more in the know about what's happening have a better sense of optimism, and maybe that's because they kind of, they know what happened 10 or 20 years ago and they feel good about what's happening now. And maybe online survey participants just are kind of, just sort of, they approached the question from kind of focused on maybe their block, their neighborhood, and just maybe not as comprehensively maybe as others who answered that question.
Regarding the tax chart you put up there, that was strictly property tax. It didn't involve any other tax.
Strictly property taxes, just the property tax levy.
Okay, thank you.
I found it interesting, some of the points that you touched on, rehabilitating houses, improving neighborhoods, are some of the things that we are working on.
Yeah.
So I think that's good to see in a plan, that that's a priority, and I think that's what we see here as council.
Yeah, I think, yeah, certainly, I think, we hope that's something that the plan, as it begins to get drafted, something that it reflects are things that you've really made an effort to do more of and kind of specialize in. And if we can, in any way, sort of work that into the plan. And also as thinking about resources, if you're doing X number of rehabs per year, but you'd like to do Y number, using the plan to help figure out how you can figure out the gap, what would be needed in terms of tools and resources?
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll move on to public comment. Before we open that up, I need to announce that we had two executive sessions, one on November 13th and one on November 27th, and both were for personnel. At this time, we will now open the floor for public comment. If anyone would like to address council, you may come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments to under five minutes. Floor is now open.
Good evening. My name is Yolanda Easterling. 2319 Washington Avenue is my address, Altoona. I can go now? Okay, well, I'm here to speak about the vacant property next to my property. I was granted, I believe, the city clerk informed me, that I was granted the right to purchase this property. Only half, though. And I'm here to ask for permission to purchase the whole thing. Yes.
This was a vacation of a property that was discussed at the work session. This is the one that she was going to vacate half of it, the neighbor beside her. But there was a discussion. Unopened alley, yes.
What's the question, the whole thing?
Correct.
Okay.
The way it works, if it's vacated, once you vacate it, the property line goes to the adjoining property owners to the middle of the right-of-way. So, I mean, once that's done, each adjoining property owner, each side would get, you know, to the middle. If one of them wanted, like, the whole thing, that one half that went to the other property owner, they would have to address that with them. Okay, so.
Well.
You would have to get the other property owner to sign off.
I was given that piece of paper as well. The other occupant or my neighbor, she's not interested in doing anything with the property. From what, I've owned it for about a year and a half now, and I've been cutting the grass. It's a steep hill. And if we look at it, if I cut only half of mine, or half of what is considered mine, the other half is not being maintained at all. So because it's not being maintained, that's why I would like permission to purchase the whole thing.
There's a process, because we've done these for other items, it's in the code. There's an application she would have to submit and present, you know, it would go through the city clerk's office, then.
So who one staff would she be working with on that?
She refuses to even cooperate with me.
This is the kind of thing that just drives me crazy. We have someone who wants to take responsibility for a property, and there's some confusion to how we get this done. And I think we have to get through this kind of stuff. So can we give this young lady direction?
The code spells out the process.
Okay, so who would she deal with? You, Linda?
Yes, it's me in engineering, and we do have a process, and it's really not confusing. It's just a matter of with her wanting to get both sides, like.
We can do, like, the city can do the vacation. Once you do the vacation, as I said, it goes to the middle. If she wants the adjoining property owner's half, she would have to get a deed from the adjoining property owner to transfer that portion to her.
I'm sorry, but I thought Altoona was the owner of this property. So why would I speak with a neighbor who doesn't want to speak with me and don't want to do anything with the property?
Because under the law, under the law, when you vacate an unopened alley like that, that's the law, it goes to the middle.
So if I do nothing, who's going to cut the grass then?
Okay, ma'am, I'm just, I'm telling, it's like, I cannot, we cannot vacate it and say it's all yours, okay? Because under the law.
Can you explain to me what vacate means?
It basically means we have an unopened right-of-way, and vacating it, we're relinquishing any right, title, and interest we have to, the city is.
I thought and believed, if it's over 20 years, the city doesn't have any hold or.
You're asking if we go through the vacation process, that's what happens.
But is the statement that I said any truth to that?
I mean, ma'am, there's no process here by which we can give you that entire unopened right-of-way.
Is.
A right-of-way technically and legally may be a little different, so correct me if I'm wrong, but it's actually the people's right-of-way. So we sort of represent the people as the city. You being a property owner adjacent to that right-of-way, and your neighbor being the other property owner on the other side of that right-of-way, when we vacate, that gives you dibs to the middle of that right-of-way so that you could extend your property to the middle, which also gives your neighbor dibs on their side to extend to the middle. So your neighbor would simply have to sign off and say, okay, I don't want anything to do with it. Here's the, you would get whoever is representing you, or to get your neighbor to sign the piece of paper saying, yep, I don't want anything to do with it. Here you go. I'm giving up my right to the dibs on my half of the right-of-way.
So am I correct with hearing I can move my fence at any time without going through this process with the city clerk?
That's not what I'm saying. No.
No. To her half, if she has claimed her half, but you're talking about going beyond your half to your neighbor's.
Yeah.
Now you have to get an okay from your neighbor.
So at this point, I can move my fence over to my half?
This hasn't been vacated, by the way.
Oh, okay, yeah, we didn't do our part yet.
All right, but we don't have the application.
In this kind of situation.
Um, was there anything that I did not do? I'm speaking to the city clerk.
You still have to provide the plan and the map, the legal description, and you have to pay a fee to start the process.
Jesus, okay.
Yeah, we gave you that information.
Right, so, but if I decide to do nothing, then that means that I cannot be fined for not maintaining the property? If I don't cut grass, if I don't blow leaves, if I don't do anything to that right-of-way, am I subject to a fine?
Have you been assessed a fine?
I'm just asking, I've always cut it. I maintain that property, the whole thing, because the other neighbor does not want to do anything. So I'm asking.
Now, you wouldn't get fined for not cutting the right-of-way, because that's not technically your property.
Okay, so from this day on, I'm not going to do any more maintenance on that property?
That's fair enough. We have a process in place to take care of property for cutting grass and, you know, doing maintenance that needs to be done for codes. If that is a right-of-way, the city probably could mow and lean, mow that, if I'm correct.
I've been there almost two years, and I have not seen anyone cut, mow, but me.
Well, and let me be clear, we would, I think the city, if you request it, I think the city is amenable to make that happen. We just have to have all the paperwork.
All the paper, I'm not paying a fee, and I'm not going to go and get engineering involved if I can't have the whole thing, if I only do the half. if I can't have the whole thing, if I only do the half and she's not maintaining the other half, it's going to be a burden on me.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but, you know, that's a choice that you're going to have to make.
Okay, I made it, I made it. So I guess I'm letting the city council know I won't be doing any more maintenance on that. Anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more public comment?
Autumn Temple, I live in North Fourth Avenue in Juniata. First of all, I must have my heads, like, in the sand to not know anything about this survey or what the intention of it is, so I'll have to do some research and find out what that is, because the outcomes that you were talking about were pretty interesting. Hopefully, that as the city, you're also looking at some of the other data that's available that would also give you some of that information, such as from the Blair County Healthy Community Coalition that talks about economic development and health and things like that. Hopefully, you're looking at the PACE survey, which is from Pennsylvania Criminal and Crime and Delinquency that talks about things like community connectiveness, and do we feel like we have availability of specific things for families and stuff? So I will look at that survey and try to make a meeting and see what you're asking, and hopefully, I won't be one of those people that are pessimistic if I answer the survey online, if it's still available.
They're at the Trolley Works tomorrow night, just so you know.
Yeah, I teach tomorrow night, but that's interesting that twenty people showed up at the civic center. That's a little civic center, so that's really good, you must have gotten the news out to somebody. Then the other things that I'm here to say is, you guys are talking about taxes and increases, and I've listened to him, and I usually say, no, 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 don't be raising taxes. Like, you know, there's people out there that can't afford it, but I have to say that, you know, throughout this past year, and probably a little over the year, I've been watching city council and what you guys are doing and attempting to do in our city, and you've, you know, you're attempting to fight blight and shutting down landlords that have no business in having properties and trying to clean up neighborhoods and things like that. You've adopted the pool and, you know, given an avenue for that neighborhood that needs that asset, and you're trying to, you know, improve things there. So although I'm usually a nosayer and say, no, 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 don't raise taxes, I would say, if you guys are going to continue to invest in the community and put our taxes in places that are going to make these improvements for our families and our youth and our community overall, then you have to do what you need to do. The only thing that I would ask is, if there are avenues for funds, I know, like, for landlords, there's some avenues for funds available for investment in rental properties to increase the availability of low-income homes. If some of that money, maybe, if you can look at avenues for supporting senior citizens, they've made the choice to live here, they've paid their taxes, they've paid their dues, they've, a lot of them have worked here, and they've invested in the community that they're living in. So, you know, when you're looking at a retirement check, it's a lot, it's smaller than their working check, and if there are funds available to help landlords and investors to bring properties here, then to be looking at, are there funds available to maybe subsidize seniors who have lived here for long, long terms and own their properties and things? So that's the only thing that I would suggest in looking at raising taxes is, is there an avenue to subsidize for seniors who can show some economic deficiencies and support that they would need to maintain their home for either improvement or taxes? And then I just want to say, good job, you guys are doing things that I think, you know, make our community a good place to live. You know, some guy, I don't know if he's famous or not famous, says, make America great again? And I say, like, make Altoona great again, you know, let us have those street lights for alarm clocks? I know you guys probably had the alarm clock street lights where you were home before the light got on. So just continue to do what you're doing and trying to make our community a better place. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment before we close the floor? All right, we will close the floor and move on to the resolutions, Linda.
Item A is approving the minutes of the Altoona City Council meeting held Monday, November thirteenth, 2023. Item B is approving the 2024 to 2028 capital improvement program, which includes a reasonable, prioritized, and practical list of capital projects to be undertaken by the city over the next five years. These capital projects are designed to preserve the city's infrastructure, ensure safety and efficiency of city personnel, and maintain the quality of life in the community. Item C is amending and restating the fee resolution to include parking rates by the Altoona Parking Authority and street opening attached here, too. Item D is authorizing the city solicitor to prepare and file a declaration of taking for purposes of securing a utility easement owned by 2521 Industrial Avenue as depicted in the plan prepared by the Eads Group dated September twentieth, 2023. Item E is approving the amendment to the CDBG program, removing the end-use requirement for the property located at eighteen seventeen to nineteen Eighth Avenue Altoona and further authorizing reimbursement to the Community Development Block Grant Program by the City of Altoona in the amount of $5,000. Item F is approving the settlement, receipt, and release agreement by the City of Altoona and the Redevelopment Authority of Altoona regarding Krista L. Chilcote and the property addressed as thirteen oh seven Eighteenth Avenue, and further authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement and the city clerk to attest to same. Item G is authorizing the renewal of a hazmat agreement between the city, the County of Blair, and the Blair County Local Emergency Planning Committee for beginning January one, 2024 through December thirty-first, 2025, and further authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item H is authorizing a first-receiver contamination services agreement between the city, Altoona Fire Department, and the Department of Veterans Affairs for the James E. Vans V.A. Medical Center, effective upon the signature of the city manager and expiring on November eleventh, 2028. And item I is setting the meeting date of Tuesday, January second, 2024, at six PM in the city's training facility and council chambers for the purpose of an organizational meeting of Altoona City Council and a regular voting meeting. Is there anything that needs to be deleted or pulled for separate vote?
So for January, the meeting, the first meeting's moved up a week, and then the work session goes back to the regular fourth Monday?
If you want it to be, it will.
We'll vote on that.
It would be on the, it would be in the, on that January second meeting, your entire calendar and schedule would be on that meeting. And I'll call for the vote on a consent vote. Councilman Beatty.
Yes.
Councilman Butterbaugh.
Yes.
Councilman Cooper.
Yes.
Councilman Ellis.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ickes.
Yes.
Councilman Kelly.
Yes.
Mayor Pacifico.
Yes.
The consent vote passes seven to zero. We have three ordinances on the agenda, the first is for introduction, and it is an ordinance of the City of Altoona amending the code to amend Chapter four oh five entitled Lease and/or Conveyance of City-Owned Lands to authorize conveyance of city-owned land located at nineteen oh one North Ninth Avenue to the Redevelopment Authority of Altoona for one dollar. Reaffirm the remainder of Chapter four oh five. Repeal all other ordinances or parts thereof in conflict therewith. Provide severability of provisions and provide an effective date. Is there a council member willing to introduce this ordinance?
So moved.
This ordinance is introduced by Councilman Ellis. We have a second ordinance for adoption introduced by Councilman Ellis, and it's an ordinance of the City of Altoona and the County of Blair, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, appropriating specific sums estimated to be required for the specific purposes of the municipal government hereinafter set forth during the year 2024. Is there a motion for adoption?
Motion.
Does that count, Councilman Ickes? Okay, a second, I'm sorry, mayor? This ordinance was moved for adoption by Vice Mayor Ickes, seconded by Mayor Pacifico. Call for the vote, Councilman Beatty.
Yes.
Councilman Butterbaugh.
Yes.
Councilman Cooper.
Yes.
Councilman Ellis.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ickes.
Yes.
Councilman Kelly.
Yes.
Mayor Pacifico.
Yes.
And the vote passes seven to zero. We have a second ordinance for adoption, which was introduced by Councilman Ellis, and it is an ordinance of the City of Altoona, County of Blair, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending Chapter six forty-six entitled Taxation, and in particular, six forty-six dash ninety-six, Millage Established Ongoing Tax, establishing the tax rate for all real estate subject to taxation located in the City of Altoona, Pennsylvania, at a rate of five point six two nine mils for the year 2024, and continuing thereafter without reenactment until said rate is changed by city council. The ordinance also provides for a reaffirmation of the remainder of Chapter six forty-six, repeal of all ordinances or parts of laws in conflict therewith, severability of provisions, and an effective date. Is there a motion for adoption?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
This ordinance was moved for adoption by Councilman Ellis and seconded by Vice Mayor Ickes. I'll call for the vote. Councilman Beatty.
Yes.
Councilman Butterbaugh.
Yes.
Councilman Cooper.
Yes.
Councilman Ellis.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ickes.
Yes.
Councilman Kelly.
Yes.
Mayor Pacifico.
Yes.
And the vote passes seven to zero.
Okay, thanks, everybody, moving on to manager updates, Omar.
Thank you, mayor, council members, just a couple of items. The Glow Up Downtown event this past Friday was, by all accounts, resounding success, as was the Spirit of Christmas Parade that followed on Saturday afternoon. I personally want to thank city staff for supporting these events, including the Department of Public Works, Police Department, Fire Department, Community Development Department, and especially the Department of Administration. City Clerk and Kim Carreri were leading the charge on everything that needed to be done for those events. And then the other thing I just wanted to point out, obviously, CZB reps made their presentation and a preview of the comp plan tonight. I just want to, I don't know if it was clear to council, but that they made a presentation to the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee this morning. They're going to meet with the Altoona Planning Commission tomorrow to provide a similar presentation. And they also are going to be here, they were here today, meeting with some small groups of council members, and they will be doing the same tomorrow. Just, that's all I have.
Thank you, Omar. Moving on to council discussion items, I just want to echo what Omar said about the Glow Up Downtown Altoona and the Christmas Parade. Friday night was a great, great event, kind of had that Hallmark Christmas movie feel to it in downtown Altoona, so that was pretty cool. We had a lot of help from city staff, Kim, Linda, Diana, Nate and his crew, Sergeant Plummer, Chief Merrill, and Nate Taylor in the back there. He was busy taking photos and recording video of the two nights. Want to thank Seven Mountains Media for helping us, they were a good partner, I thought, for the parade. Everything went well, the weather was beautiful, the extended parade route was nice. It was good to see so many people lining the streets, probably the most, the biggest-attended parade I've ever seen in Altoona, so it was a good job by everybody all around. Moving on now, Councilman Kelly.
Again, I would echo the comments and thank everyone involved with the parade. You're playing in a band, being in the parade, you just always hope you have a real nice crowd, and the crowd was just, it was just great, the entire parade length. And, you know, that, people that are in the parade, the units that are in the parade, really appreciate that. So kudos and thanks to everyone involved for all their hard work, it really paid off.
Thank you. Councilman Cooper.
I have to agree, it was just a great event for all, I'm sorry. It was a great event for all of Altoona, it was great to see so many people come downtown, and I just hope for years to come, it'll remain and get better and better. And I thank staff for all the work that you put into it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Butterbaugh.
While out and about the last couple of days around town, I received probably more positive comments over the events of the weekend than in a lot of cases, like, a lot of folks were really pleased to see the progress of downtown. They were so happy to be there for the events and just positive all around, and I think that's just a great kudos to the staff and all involved for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Ickes.
Thank you, mayor, yeah, we had a lot of activities taking place in downtown Altoona this weekend, all of which were strong and family-oriented, which is always good to see for a community. Hard to believe we're at the last meeting of the year, so I want to thank department heads and staff. It's hard to believe I've been here four years now, time flies. And just genuinely appreciate all the work that you all do, day in and day out, trying to move the city in the right direction. Mitch, I think this is your last meeting, correct?
Yes.
Feel like you're just hitting your stride here. It's been great to work with you for the last three months, I'm sure I'll see you around, and wishing everyone a very Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. I want to wish the staff and administration a great holiday season coming up. You have worked during War With Less in my short two years here, and it's appreciated from me. I do get frustrated with things at times, but it's frustration because there's things that I think we can do, and it's no fault of the staff, it's things that we should be doing as decision-makers to put everybody in a better position to succeed. So I apologize for my frustration earlier, but I want to tell you, I think the world of all of you, I think you're doing a great job, and I think the comments of the young lady in public comment show that we are making a difference here, we're making some positive changes, and we're making some positive things happen, so thank you all very much, and I wish you a great holiday season.
Thank you. Councilman Beatty.
As we go into the holiday season, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. And it appears that we'll be taking the first two homes into the redevelopment land bank this month, and I think that that's going to go a long way toward bringing affordable, quality housing to Altoona. And I think this is just the very beginning, and I think it will get better very quickly. So thanks for everybody's hard work.
Thank you. Questions from the media, Bill?
Thank you. Any other comments on the CZB presentation?
I haven't had my individual meeting with them yet, I think it's scheduled for tomorrow, eleven thirty? All right, good, at least someone knows where I'm supposed to be tomorrow. There, I think we've been provided a good bit of information here tonight. Obviously, we'll probably dive more into the weeds tomorrow, so I'm looking forward to obviously having a plan put in place for us to put into action for the next decade to continue moving Altoona in a growth direction, Bill.
Yeah, Bill, I'm looking forward to see the finished product of the comp plan. Pete, Matt, their whole team, they've been doing a really good job as far as gathering and collecting the data, putting it together. We saw at the steering committee meeting today, a little sample of what's to come in the full plan, and, you know, the pictures, the graphs, the data that they use, the way they presented in there, it's a, it's a good guide, I think, that will help us kind of roadmap us into the future as far as what's, what we're going to do in terms of housing, transportation, recreation, just things like that, just to give us a better idea of what the community wants, because this is a plan that is being put together by them, you know, so it's kind of the voice of the people of Altoona is what's drafting that plan for us, you know, so it's important that we know what the community wants.
Bill, I think the coolest thing about this is that we've had an eye on. Bill, I think the coolest thing about this is that we've had an eye on every property in Altoona, you know, as far as rating condition, what the needs are, what the neighborhoods are, and I think it'll give us a really good place to start to plan forward as to how to improve the neighborhoods and create more taxable revenue to support city services going forward.
I would agree with that, Ron. The presentation I received today was very impressive, and what I like most about it is it's laying the groundwork for maybe turning the tide and having the young folks in this city stay here and others attracted to this area. If this can be a successful effort, I think it'll go a long way to accomplishing that.
Dave, I know you commented a little bit a minute ago about the presentation from the woman from Washington Avenue, Yolanda, I think her name is. Do you want to elaborate on that at all or not?
Well, I probably should have counted to ten before I hit send. All right. But with that said, Bill, we're dealing with blighted neighborhoods. We're dealing with properties that are not, not kept up to snuff, okay? And I just think we need to do a better job, and I'm not pointing to staff. I think it's our responsibility, the seven of us sitting up here, need to do a better job putting staff in a position to succeed with this, that if someone comes into a situation like that, and I don't know all the facts, so I probably shouldn't have blown off like I did, okay? But when someone comes in with a situation like that, why can't we, and maybe it's because we know the right ordinances in place, and we need to find that, why can't we facilitate, if it's being split and the one property owner doesn't want it, why can't we facilitate the other property owner taking the whole thing? That's the kind of thing that frustrates me, and it's the kind of things that's holding us back in a lot of different ways, and it's just not that. There's other things, too.
Would anyone care to comment? I know the budget is the same this month as it was proposed to be last month. Anybody want to comment on the, on the point-five mil tax hike at this point?
Bill, we have, local government is intended to be the closest to the people, for which it is. It's also the, probably the most intimate and formal government that people access every day, whether it's police, fire, codes, intimate, right? Codes, code enforcement, permitting, et cetera. In this country, the revenue structure is backward, right? So the bulk of revenue goes to the federal government, and the smallest forms of revenue come to local government, okay? We have essential services that we have to provide for. We have to provide for police service, code enforcement. Our city has maintained, is maintaining, and it is important for us to maintain a paid fire department that in the City of Altoona, if something happens where you need fire service, you're going to have a fire department responding within two to three minutes to your property. While it is important for us to, and I am an advocate for lower taxes and less spending, that does not mean that I'm going to advocate for being irresponsible and not funding the contracts and requirements that we have committed ourselves to do. It's been, I think, since pointed out either twenty-seventeen or twenty-eighteen, I think we've done an excellent job leading up to this point to get the city back on a solid financial footing. We are trending in the right direction. What we cannot afford to do is to cut services, and by taking action tonight, we will not be needing to do that.
Okay. Anyone else?
One other thing, I'll go ahead.
I think one thing you make sure you take note of is the presentation that these folks made of where we stand in our community as far as taxing is concerned versus the other communities across Pennsylvania. There's no real barometer up here. Everything's compared, it's like comparing apples to oranges, but you got to do the best you can, and you got to look around the other communities in Pennsylvania and what they're dealing with. And, you know, we just can't continue to provide the services at the level that I think we need to provide them at, which I think we're in the low end of those services right now, and you can't continue to provide them without having some type of increase in income. This council, I think, has been committed to try to find ways to build the tax base. That's a very slow process. We've discussed this a lot about a lot of things, and that's going to take a little bit longer to get up. So we're going to have to raise taxes to provide the services we need, and it's like, it's like a cat chasing its tail. What's more important? The important thing is we have to have safety. We have to have fire safety. The fire truck shows up at your house within two or three minutes. If there's an issue with the police, the police are showing up, and we're doing investigations to keep the, to keep the drug dealers out of here. I think we're doing a great job with that, and, but we have to have the funds to do those kind of things. We got to keep the street, our streets department, our public works department is working on a very, very much of a shoestring amount of people. I mean, when you look at every department, there's minimal amount of people. I mean, one of the things that I found most outrageous when I came on council is, what's the biggest thing we need in Altoona? We need economic and community development, right? We need, we need to build our community. And at that time, we didn't even have a community development director. I mean, I mean, it's just those are the kind of things that we have to be committed to as a council, and those things cost money to do. And I think we've been responsible the last two years trying to put everything back on path. I think Omar's done a great job with making that happen, and, but to do that, you have to be able to have money to make those things occur.
Yep. In addition to public safety, you know, there's also the quality of life amenities that people want to see in the community, you know? Those come at a cost as well. People want to see the city investing into parks and recreation. Autumn mentioned Prospect Pole, you know? All these things come at a cost if we're going to be making investments in them. Anyone else?
It wasn't that long ago, there was a movement of nonsense trying to make its way across America about defunding police and not being respectful to our officers, and we didn't buy into that. Now, I am very proud of the fact that this council never, never wavered on the fact that we will back our police department, we will back our first responders. And while other communities were definitely doing the wrong thing in defunding their public safety and their police departments, we invested the opposite way and invested in our police, and that has paid off big dividends in the safety for Altoona citizens, and I'm just very proud to be on this team of folks that back, back our departments and back our first responders, back our public works and our codes and our planning, and I believe that was very, very wise to stick with our police officers in a time where many communities were abandoning them.
And Bill, I want to add, you know, Omar has been working on a plan forward, looking ten years out and looking at city buildings and just all the city assets and what possibly we might need into the future. And I think that, you know, if you look at the county and some of the issues we have with the prisons and how, you know, it wasn't funded properly in the past couple decades, I think Altoona going forward, we're going to start to look at planning for obsolescence of, you know, as we're renovating the police department. When that was built twenty years ago, we should have started to plan a remodel at this stage of the game, and that, those things weren't done. And I think that going forward, this council really wants to start to lay the foundation for a solid growth pattern forward, you know, whether it be in real estate, whether it be in parks, public buildings, you know, we're rehabbing the transportation center. You know, I think it's all things that have maybe not kept up to date, and that I think we really have the interest in making all these things a priority.
Bill, I'll just say, since this is my last meeting, pardon me, I'll, I'll risk, I'll risk kind of like a broken record, but we've been here before. The City of Altoona's been here before, specifically with the loss of federal revenue sharing decades ago, and that loss of funds resulted in a pretty significant reduction in staff. I think this, and I commend this council for looking forward, and I commend Omar for looking forward and coming up with a plan where we're not caught at the end of next year, looking at a huge deficit, that the only way it can be handled is to look at another reduction in staff or a huge increase in taxes. So I, I commend this council, and I appreciate being part of the preparation for the budget. Thank you.
Would anybody care to say anything about the capital improvement program, which I didn't have a chance to look at, but, you know, like, what's kind of driving that?
I think we did, I know we did the right thing using a lot of ARPA dollars for capital improvement. You know, twenty months ago, Bill, borrowing money twenty months ago is vastly different than borrowing money today, right? Ten-year treasury was at fifteen basis points, and today it's, you know, four and a quarter or four and a half, right? So your borrowing has increased significantly over the last twenty months. We still have a lot of work to do on capital improvement and infrastructure. It's a plan, right? So it's a document that's provided to us that allows council to make an informed decision on what parts of those programs are we going to dive into? What are we going to do? Is there stuff that needs to be done more immediately than the others? So it allows us to prioritize the needs from the ones.
In item D, or Resolution D, what was the need, why need, why do you need to use eminent domain for a utility easement?
Well, at this point, Bill, what it was is the, we're having a little trouble getting a hold of the property owner. It's just for a utility easement, a small portion. Recently, we've been able to make contact. We think we're going to be able to get an easement, and we won't need to file the declaration. But, you know, at the time it was put on the agenda, it's like, because of timeliness of projects and things of that nature, it's kind of like a backup, backup plan, and for some reason, we couldn't get the easement signed, that's all.
And then, in, or in Resolution F, can somebody explain the settlement with Krista Chilcote over the Eighteenth Avenue property?
What that is, Bill, is there was a codes enforced, that arises out of a code enforcement case, and that is basically resolving that. The Ms. Chilcote has basically relinquished any right title and interest to that property. Then will be transferred to the Redevelopment Authority for what, you know, Ron has been referencing over the last several months, is efforts to create more housing stock and rehabilitation.
Okay. And then, last question, I guess it's probably similar, is the ordinance that was introduced regarding nineteen oh one North Ninth Avenue, is that, is that a similar kind of thing where it's going to be redeveloped?
That's a piece of property that is adjacent to some Redevelopment Authority properties, and somebody is interested in acquiring two Redevelopment Authority properties and that property. Nate and I went out and looked at it. It was determined, the city had, we had transferred a number of properties last year from the city to the R.A. That one we had held on to, but after, because it's close to a park, and, and we thought we might be able to use it for parking, but it was determined, there's no need for that, so there's no need for us to keep that piece of property. It's wooded ground, and so someone has made an offer for those three properties, but to sell this one, we need to transfer it to R.A. first, and then the R.A. has to consider whether they'll accept the offer, but that, this would have to be the first step.
So it could be developed along with these other two properties?
I'm sorry?
It could be developed along with these other two properties?
Yeah, it's probably not going to be developed. Somebody's made an offer, but it's just, it's pretty much wooded rugged terrain up in Geniata.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.